Six o'clock.
It does.
For reflection. And we'll rise with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Willie, will you lead us in the roll call for the termination of Coram?
We've got Jerry Burmeister here. Uh, Stu Jan here. Jane Ising. Jane. Jane Davis here. Uh, who else we got?
Just Brian.
And me.
Oh, yeah.
Good grief. We're off to a really great start tonight. Five out of five members as well as clerk treasurer, we have Coram. In the Google Drive, you'll find the minutes from the August meeting as presented and prepared by the clerk treasurer's office. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding those? If there aren't any changes or discussion regarding them, I will entertain a motion for approval of the August 2025 meeting minutes.
Make a motion, second.
And the motion and a second for approval of the August 2025 meeting minutes as presented, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to the clerk treasurer's report in the Google Drive, we have the current claims as well as the clerk treasurer's report. Are there any questions for Willie regarding the clerk treasurer's report or the claims? If there aren't any questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the claims as presented.
Remove. Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the claims as presented, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried unanimously. Moving on to department reports, we will start with the chief of police Mark Far.
Good evening. Police Department report for August 25. Solid Rock Block Party was held again, Officer Ethan took the MRAP down, that's always a big deal often people down there. Their pastor, Aaron Hargus is our chaplain, so that's kind of a church family for our department. We have the swearing ceremony on August 11th with Officer, the new officer Travis Thompson, Brett Webb and Isaiah Thomas, they were joined by their family. There were some dictators from town, the Metro Board of Commissioners came and it was a good turnout, everybody that showed up. Something interesting with our new hires comes a wealth of training and ability. So something Pendleton's never really had, I say we've never had. And I've had this explanation before in public settings, but SWAT just simply means special weapons and tactics. And all that means is you can't afford to outfit everybody, so you have a little group that you throw all the money in. Over my nineteen years, I've tried to throw the money at all my patrolmen, so we have the rifles, we have the upgraded ballistics, we have the MRAP, so we have the kick abilities. With the officers I just hired, their training is another level. And so we're going to start looking, putting together some type of SRT team that uses their knowledge and abilities. With that said, myself and Captain Trailer have been working on, there's two grants right now that we're hoping will fund a large part of our desire. So if that doesn't fill the whole void of money, then we're going to start scaling in the intersection. I think it's worthwhile if you don't want to waste these guys' buildings. So that's something that's on the table for us.
And don't mention, don't forget to mention the two officers that have been on for about a year now.
Oh, yeah.
We're also SWAT members.
Absolutely. No, in fact, it was kind of a thing when they showed up, they're like, can we still wear our wings? Well, we don't have on Pendleton. Lucas sold the thing, if you're not SWAT, you're not, so with that, we let them wear their badge still. And let's see, everybody qualified, of course, with their firearms. I took the junk vehicles to Boone Auction, I don't believe we received a check from them yet, but that was a huge auction, so I'm expecting that.
Yeah.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
I don't even know how much we made.
But you're not so heavy.
Yeah, well, that's fine, I'll call it in. And Public Safety Day again, with a huge success and the Fire Department was a great host and weather was perfect. For once, we weren't all melted.
Yeah.
A total of 1,525 dispatch calls for last month, twenty-six criminal arrests. My secretary, I'm currently in a thing, so I don't have the breakdown of how many adults were involved in those twenty-six arrests. And seventeen crashes, eighty-six citations and four local ordinances. And then while we're working on the ordinance thing, I put out a ruling to the guys, I gave them directive not to provide any ordinances right now. So that's where we're at.
Awesome.
We expect her to return soon, is the hope and desire by everybody, including her, so she's got to jump through a couple more little hoops, but.
Good.
Great.
Yep.
Wish her well.
Yep.
Anything for Mark? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the park, Cherry.
So I'm just going to go over a few of our party events.
Will you make sure that mic's on, just push the button.
The button down there.
Yeah, there you go, perfect.
Okay.
I have the orange ring on it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. Just some events we've had recently and some things going on in the park. So Park Fest just took pass, or just took place this past Thursday evening and it was a real success. We had over three hundred people attend, two hundred and forty-eight tickets were sold, we gave out several tickets to sponsors to join us. It was a really successful night, we had lots of games and things for the kiddos, including Elvie, a DJ, Push Play Entertainment. Christie brought him in for the time before Stella Luna came on and that was a really big success for the night. And Stella Luna is always amazing, great with the crowds, and so it was great to see them out there again. With the last five years of Park Fest, this is a fundraising event that was started by four ladies and the park took it over this year. But with the last five years, we have over sixty thousand saved up for an amphitheater, so we're really excited about the next step with that. And Heritage Fair, this is actually run by the Friends of Falls Park, not us, but this partnership has been a huge fundraiser for the park. And they had an excellent weekend as well, with over seventeen thousand people in attendance over the two days, great weather. And this year alone, they brought in twenty-one thousand in fundraising for the park, so really successful as engine. Just a huge shout out to our Friends group because it was a very large event to pull off, so did a great job. I don't know if you guys have noticed pickleball court stuff going on and playground stuff at Barnhart Field, but those are both in the works. And so we're at pickleball, we have post holes that are dug for the nets, we have Top Choice fencing there this week, putting the perimeter up and fencing. And that's going really well. HSC paving will be back out after the twenty-second and that's to install the acrylic, two coats of acrylic and then the colors for the painted courts and the lines and then they'll put in the nettings. And the last step will be Top Choice coming back out to put a net through the center. And so we hope that the grand opening will be early October, excited about that. Tyler Playground, Play Froze is out there this week, cement slabs were laid earlier this week where the playground equipment will go. And they started installing that playground structure today, which was really exciting to see a few of those pieces out there. I'm sure the kiddos, it's just going to make it hard not to get and climb on them, but they're not quite done yet. We're looking at hopefully about four weeks and we'll have a grand opening over there. And we will definitely be thanking our sponsors and our partners in that. Playground at Water Street and North Pendleton Avenue, we're really excited about a monumental award that it is going to receive. It's not for Falls Park this award, this is for Context Design who completed the design for that playground. That playground went up in 2023 and there's going to be an award ceremony at Cambridge Fieldhouse on October 22nd. And four of Falls Park representatives will be there, including Bryant and Erin, myself and Coco. So we're excited to go and just cheer them on, even though they're receiving the award. It's exciting for us as a park to be able to say we have an award-winning playground. And last but not least, Boobash, it's on the calendar for October eighteenth and we're excited about that. That'll be from five to eight at the Sports Complex and we are always still looking for more trunks than candy, so thank you.
What kind of award is it for, like just design or is it for accessibility? Because I know it's kind of multifaceted at that.
Yes, yeah, there's several categories of indie chamber, this is a indie chamber award program. And there's several different categories you can be placed in. Context Design is in the architectural category.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything for Cherry?
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Planning Department.
Right. All I have is one word, Okra. That has been our life for the past six weeks or so. But just a few things, other projects that we have had some updates on, but Denise will get into our lovely Okra grant, we are nearing, nearing the end on it. So our State Street Traffic Signal Improvements, that's the project that we're working with A and F Engineering to make these lights smart, to make them ADA compliant, put in correct pedestrian crossings and signals for them. Maybe even work on some sort of timing software, it's not my field of expertise, but I know it is some traffic engineer. So making the flow down here smarter. So we met with them in September and got preliminary designs. They went through it with us, we gave immediate comments, things we wanted to update. And then kind of, we did have to cut back one piece, which is the fire signal lights because there's a major storm issue at that intersection. And we can lump it with another CCMG project to get more dollars for that, because we were already spreading it pretty thin, getting fire lights. But we can definitely do that with a different project and fix the collapsed storm structure there at Broadway. So, next one please. And you can go to downtown plan, that's the same language. So we had our planning commission, public presentation for the downtown plan update and the comp plan update. And these were just introductions, they were not voted on, no recommendations, anything like that. But they will be doing their formal public presentation, public hearing at the October Plan Commission meeting for both of these to come to Town Council in November. Next please. So finally getting our tuck pointing done, it'll be done by the end of the year. Our Mason is starting after the Okra visit, they were going to start that week they had scheduled and then I had to say not the fifteenth, any day after that. So they will be re-tuck pointing all of our deteriorated tuck point, cleaning the limestone sills under all of the windows and reinstalling the decorative brick stacked parapets that are missing on this building and quite a few buildings as we've come to find with all of this research into our Okra buildings. Next please. And last thing, our pedestrian crossing signal pilot project is finally in, in both places. So we have a solar powered RRFB, which is a rapid something flashing beacon. I don't know what the other R stands for, but that is something where someone can push a button, there are two lights on the side of the road that have that little pedestrian diamond and bright flashing lights and it'll indicate to a vehicle to slow down, there's a pedestrian crossing the road. There's one at three hundred and right below the roundabout where the kids go over to the ball fields. That one's solar powered because there's no trees nearby. And our hardwired one is in the middle of, was that John Street and the entrance to the Falls Park Department Office? So it goes into that wooded area where there was a lot of smart damage from the tornadoes. We've heard great things thus far from folks, they really like them. The electric department really didn't have all that much of a struggle to get them in. I know that really the only thing was, excuse me, they were much too tall, we ordered just kind of a standard pole size, it was way too big. So now we're going to just start for, you know, the next phase of this project, ordering shorter ones. So that is really all I've got for you right now. I guess to that point, we are going to look at installing a temporary one at the fire station on kind of the east side of the intersection there. Just so we at least have one pedestrian crossing, because people tend to not really stop there because there's not even a stoplight there. But as we do that entire storm infrastructure fix, putting in fire lights and that infrastructure, we are going to be putting in a complete pedestrian system there as well. But we can order these in pieces and parts, so they said you can just put them on stop sign poles for now, just so we have something. Because I think the earliest call we can go for that is July of twenty-seven. Anything for me, any questions, any other updates? Thanks Hannah.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Thanks, first one, we've got Elm Street, Main Street Reconstruction Project. There's been a little bit of a delay on this project in one part, that is on Elm Street. We were waiting for Frontier, they needed to get in there and to remove their cable off of a couple of the poles there. And they have now removed that, relocated those onto the new poles, so then next week you're going to start seeing activity there on Elm Street. JJ Construction, they're going to go ahead and get back into doing the storm water improvement lines, the underground work there. And then we'll be able to start seeing the street, the sidewalks and the curbing gutters to stay, to shape, take form, apologize about that. They also on Main Street have been really working the last few weeks, the sidewalks, the driveway aprons, those sidewalks and curbing gutters, they look amazing. They have really transformed this road, so if you've not been down there, please go check that out. We do have a few punchless items that need to be corrected, but they are being very responsive and going to be taking care of those here in the next couple of weeks. There was also a retainted wall there to the north of Main Street that was disturbed, private property there, that has been also replaced as well. So we are expecting this project to complete, we are hopeful to have it all wrapped up by the end of November. We're looking at probably the end of December before this project is fully worked up. The next one is our North Heritage Way construction, it's moving along very well, we're continuing to have those weekly progress meetings between BL Brown, their contractor, JDK Kids and also the town of Pendleton, and then we also have Banning involved with those meetings. Road stabilization is complete, we did a proof roll that was conducted, there were four small areas that undercut is going to have to take place. And that would just be where those subgrades are removed and repaired. Their curb under drains, those are being installed now and then the big, pretty large mound there where that large detention pond is almost complete. And then that lift station for Fall Creek Regional Waste, the coring has taken place for the piping for that system. And then there's been some great communication because we have two different developers. So we have JDK Kids that are developing North Heritage Way as well as a couple of side roads eventually will be Rose Gate to the east, Iron Gate to the west of North Heritage Way. But then we also have a private developer BP Gas Station, they're going to be there at the corner of the North Heritage Way, which would be that northeast corner. So they're responsible for constructing that Serenity Drive. So we're doing due diligence there to make sure that we coordinate those road improvements, looking for BL Brown being the contractor for both of those. So we met with them last week and we'll be able to make that a seamless process. The next project, we have a road impact zone improvement plan update. A and F, their data collection is all complete, so they are currently under analysis, they're reviewing all those findings, that would be those gradings of the intersections and the roadways and how they're performing with our current traffic flow. The first steering committee meeting, we just had this last week, this group of ten individuals are highly qualified for this project. And I anticipate and we anticipate they're going to give a lot of contributions to the development of this plan and then eventually the ordinance and the processes that will come out of that. We'll look forward to hearing about findings sometime in October when we bring that steering committee back together again. The Pendleton McCarty Drain Project, we are very, very pleased to announce that the de-watering plan has now been approved and stamped by an engineer. So what that means is that we can take that packet and we have submitted that to CSX. CXX has acknowledged receipt of that and they're taking that under review. So as long as we meet their standards with that new de-watering plan, then they're going to get us back on the schedule and then construction will be able to commence on that. And last but not least, preserving Main Street, great. I don't know where to begin with this one. What has transpired over the last, like Hannah Rose had mentioned, four to six weeks, it's simply been remarkable. You know, the enthusiasm, the passion for our community, everyone rallying behind Main Street, Pendleton. It's inspiring and it's very moving and it's what we all love about Pendleton. And just seeing the community come together for one focus and one amazing day that we're going to have coming up this Monday has just been a fuel for all of us to keep us going, you know, throughout this process. Just to give you a little bit of a quick summary of what has transpired here in the last few short weeks since Okra had announced that we are one of the top two finalists. So just coming Monday, just a quick reminder, from twelve o'clock to three thirty in the afternoon, we're going to undergo an interview with Main Street, we have an hour presentation, we have a half hour Q and A. We'll get about a ten, fifteen minute break and then we'll go into a forty-five minute tour of our community. So all it ends that, in the last month, we have held, we have held here in the town hall, two big community planning sessions. We probably had twenty individuals plus, also individuals that may not have been able to come to those meetings, but they were plugging into different pieces and parts of this day. We also hosted a building owners session as well, because that is a big piece, because this is the Historic Preservation Grant. And so in order to, in order for this grant to, to meet those deliverables, we have to have the buy-in for these building owners. And we are thrilled to announce that we have probably nine to ten different building owners within our community that are all in, ready to participate. Unfortunately, just because of the quick turnaround, we are only able to have six of those projects ready to present for Okra and NCC. But since then, in the last few weeks, we have taken on partners through Mike Feinfeeder, he is our grant administrator. We have a videographer that's going to be doing a video coverage to just really kickstart our presentation, to cover the spirit of our community, but then also to highlight our priority of historic preservation and the importance it is to our community. But then also, we have teamed up with Ratio Design and RC Engineers and they are the ones that in one week, they have turned around amazing packet for us, we just received today, showing these six buildings and what, the renderings of what it could look like to meet the standards of the anterior secretary of design, to be able to bring them back to the historic significance that they need to qualify for these grant dollars and then to be able to itemize them into a high level cost estimate. So those building owners will then be able to know, okay, this is what it's going to take to be able to renovate and preserve the historic integrity of my structure and get them to the next step in this grant, once we get announced as the designated community. Forming teams, we have had placemaking team, we've had a welcoming team, a tour team, presentation team. We have eleven speakers, I've known speaking that day. We have a videography team, Main Street preparation team, and then the architecture piece as well. We've ordered, created banners, signage, we're going to be, have an entry in the homecoming parade tomorrow night, so please come out and join us. We have T-shirts for everyone to wear, so just really rallying behind Main Street, Pendleton, the efforts and the work that they do here for the community and it's a trickle-down effect. I mean, it starts, you know, not just with them, but this is a total, complete community partnership project. And it's going to start that way and it's going to end that way. So just want to encourage you all to come out this coming Monday, twelve to four, we're going to have exclusive shops and restaurant openings that day. So we really want everyone to come out and celebrate Pendleton that day and be present. That is all I have. Any questions for us in the planning department?
Anything for Denise?
You know, I'd like to make a comment, I'm in and out of here two or three times a week. I have witnessed the time, the work with you, Anna, Brisa, you guys are putting into this thing. Scott, I mean, it's, and it's huge for our community. Fingers crossed that we get it and it's going to make a big difference in our downtown and, but I just can't applaud you guys enough. We're not there yet, but we're close.
Yeah, we've had a lot of amazing individuals, I know Tammy Bowman's put a lot of hours into Lisa Floyd, a lot of members in our partnership and our community organizations, they just really have hugged us with this and we cannot be more thankful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's been a huge undertaking, but it's also like been energizing at the same time. Denise has been emailing at three and four in the morning, just like plugging away. I mean, Mr. Gardner and Dr. Lau were here until ten o'clock at night the other night in a meeting, so we're all kind of, you know, chipping in and many hands make light work. And I'm extremely proud of not only the team, but the community for embracing this project. And we've gotten well wishes today virtually from Elwood and Alexandria and their Main Street programs also. So it's been, like, the energy's being felt throughout the county and we're really proud of that. And what we can do to help those other organizations as they move in through their different levels of Main Street accreditation, we're going to be there to help them too. So it's been an exciting project, but I think we're all going to sleep very well Monday night. After we go to bingo at the stable maybe as a celebratory thing, so.
Yeah.
Yes. But thank you to the planning department for just really, the coordination on this has been ridiculous, but it's good, so Scott, you're up.
So the less glamorous stuff, the basics, get into that. So we have a new employee, if you could go to the next slide. Preston Keen. I know his dad, he's joined the street department and we're excited to have him, so we're up to full staffing again on the street department, if you can go back. The guy's got a ton of compliments on how quickly they got everything cleaned up after the Fall Festival and the Heritage Fair. It looked like it by the time the sun was down, it looked like it had never happened and everything was back, except for some of the barricades were stacked off to the side to get picked up on Monday. But they're working hard now. The guys from the barn are working hard, getting ready for whatever they could do to support the Okra presentation. Of course, we've got homecoming, can't forget that, that's tomorrow. Chief's always excited about that, right?
There will be candy.
There will be candy.
This will not be.
Will be candy.
We'll save that for public comments.
And then the, remember we had the little sinkhole that happened on West Street? That's substantially completed, they just have a couple more concrete pores to go and happy to report that caught it before it all got worse during all that construction. We didn't find any more problems, a little nervous about that, but we got away. And then this is just a photo looking down Main Street, probably a little bit south of Lisa Floyd's house, Craig's house. And you can see that even though Elm Street part of this has been delayed because of Frontier needing to pull, they wired off the poles, so we get rid of those poles as I said earlier, but the rest has continued and it's starting to come together and we've got new sidewalk and extra sidewalk farther down the street, if you can see it down to Madison Avenue. So with that, open to questions?
Anything for Scott? Thanks. Okay, moving on to.
Oh, I didn't have one slide, I'm sorry. Just so you know, on our substation project, that it is under design. And then we're going to start reimbursing the town for the expenses that were done upfront before the bond. So you may see a little surge in our capital fund for the lecture.
Great. Any questions regarding that for Scott? Okay, we'll move on to old business, starting with ordinance 2025-16, three-way stop at, stop sign at Falls Park Drive and East Street. We have soccer in full force and safety is a huge concern, slowing down the speed on Falls Park Drive is also an important factor here. So last month we passed this, or we accepted per se, are there any questions or comments before we entertain a motion for second read? Then I will entertain a motion for acceptance on second read, did I do that right, Rob?
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second for acceptance of ordinance 2025-16, three-way stop sign at Falls Park Drive and East Street on second read, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to ordinance. Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, speed limit in the pines at Deerfield. Last month we had a brief discussion regarding this, um and adding in the streets Buck Lane, Beach Lane, Sycamore Lane, Pin Oak Lane, as well as um the two courts that are sort of the cul-de-sacs in that um which are on the next page and their names escaped me, Barberry and Linden Court. Um, our partners at Dinsmore Field that um we are fine to make these changes to this, as long as we make a motion to amend first. As well as um we do not have to have speed limit signs on these streets that are near feet long. So we will have plenty of signs inside of the pines, but not necessarily specifically on the short dead end streets that abut uh the cemetery and also into the cul-de-sac. Are you comfortable with that, Mark?
Trying to picture someone.
Trying to go over twenty-five miles an hour on a road that is approximately forty yards long, yeah.
I would tell Matt Eldridge not to do that.
Okay, but that's a good, that's a good thing. Shane, don't get any ideas either. Um, so any questions regarding this now that we've added in these streets?
Are you going to, i- is this gonna be on every street or are we just gonna do the two at the very entrance? You've only got two entrances and out in that addition, instead of having a bunch of speed on the signs.
They were. Council's still looking into whether that would work, right? Generally speaking, I I think it's it's fine. Just wanna, especially if we have it out in in an ordinance.
I would think it'd be fine until those roads maybe are extended over forty-four, but that's.
Years.
That was supposed to have been, yeah, years ago.
But it's a close neighborhood, so. Then we talked last meeting about just doing one.
One of the entrance, yeah.
Both entrance.
Yep. We can leave that up as long as we have the ordinance to prove that we passed the the ordinance, so. Um, if we're good with this, I will entertain a motion to amend um to include those streets. Buck Lane, Beach, actually Buck was already in there, I think, Beach, Sycamore, Pin Oak, Linden and Barberry Courts.
Hello.
I have a motion to amend, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for amending ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, speed limit in the pines at Deerfield. We don't have to vote on that, we just have to make the motion to amend. Oh, we do have to vote to amend, okay. All in favor of amending ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Now I'll entertain a motion for approval. Or I guess of second read, which one do I do? Motion, motion to approve on second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, speed limit in the pine.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, speed limit in the pines at Deerfield. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, restricted parking on Elderberry and South Main Street. This is the exact same as it was presented in August. Are there any questions or comments regarding these no parking areas? If there aren't any questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion for approval on second read. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval on second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, restricted parking on Elderberry and South Main Street. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty, road weight limits within town limits. This is our very lovely heavy truck ordinance that we thought sort of existed, but it didn't. Um, this is the same as it was last month. Scott, is there anything you want to add to this or talk about? Okay, so it's the same. Are there any changes you guys would like to make before we entertain a motion for approval? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for approval on second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty, road weight limits within town limits.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval on second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty, road weight limits within town limits. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, amending title nine, chapter ninety-four, town code for Falls Park. Last month when we did this, there was um some question regarding tobacco use and alcohol use and dissolved horse area specifically. Um, so today when we met with legal to kind of go over this, it seems cleaner to, we have the paper trail from where the park board recently approved uh resolutions prohibiting the use of camping, establishing trail hours and what was it, fires and open fires um in the within the park property. Uh, so we have fresh resolutions from the park board regarding those three activities. So it's my opinion, since we're going to amend this anyway tonight, since it differs from what we were presented in August, that we just pull the references to the tobacco out for now, until the park board does their own resolution and then tells us what they want that to be. Does that work for everyone here? So therefore I would need a motion to amend to take out the references to smoking and tobacco use on park property. And then once we do that part, then we can have um a motion to approve.
And madam.
Yeah, so.
And the only other thing on exhibit B is we had a typo in there and just crossed out. Instead of board park, it's park board.
So those two little amending items. So I'll entertain a motion for, I'll entertain a motion to amend uh those things as far as removing these or the references to tobacco usage at the park, as well as amending the final page to say park board instead of board park. Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second to amend ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, to remove references to tobacco use, as well as change the word or the verbiage from board park to park board on the final page of the ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously, it has been amended. Now I will entertain a motion for approval on second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, amending title nine, chapter ninety-four, town code for Falls Park. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second for approval on second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, amending title nine, chapter ninety-four, town code for Falls Park. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Lovely, okay, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, amending the zone map as it pertains to the morgue property. This went through planning commission last week, or the days are running together, it was last week though, right?
Yes. Okay, what's the night? Yes. Oh, the third, the third.
Yeah.
The days.
Days be lucky.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, I'll let you talk about it though, Hannah, go for it.
Sure, um, so this is a eighty-eight acre um farming property and the owner wanted to slice off a three acre parcel uh to build a home uh with this zoning, the smallest uh parceling you can do to fit the code requirements is forty acres, yes, if a hundred acres, you could split off a chunk of forty, do what you want with it. Uh, but to do this, they needed to rezone down to rural residential. So that is what they did, uh, there was no discussion, got a favorable uh recommendation from the planning commission.
Any questions for Hannah regarding this? Like she said, it didn't receive a favorable recommendation from planning commission.
We get, we get quite a few of these where it's just cutting a piece off to build a house or give to a family member or something like that, it's just, it's hard with that large lot zoning when you've got eighty, hundred, two hundred acres. Might not want forty acres.
Any other questions, comments regarding this? Okay, then I will, now, Rob, do I do?
The sub motion and the second to for approve for first reading.
Okay. Is that fine by Mr. Moore, the petitioner, that we do no vote? Does it still get adopted or do you?
It would uh be, we would have then have a second reading next, next meeting.
Okay, do you know his timeframe?
I I believe he would prefer to get this button just quickly as possible.
Yeah. We, okay, Rob, can you offer clarity? Because we used to always say that if we received a favorable recommendation from planning commission, that then it would basically second read for uh when it came here. That's technically not how it works, right, Rob?
Uh, that, yeah, we we clarified it. I I technically we could do it that way. We we did change the town code a lot as permitted by law. I think we, if we have a first reading for tonight, I'd say let's move the suspendable some vote on it and then the.
You, you have a motion to approve on first read?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval on first read. Now there's no vote for that, correct, Rob? Okay, so a motion and a second for first read. Now I need a motion to suspend the rules to entertain second read on the night of introduction.
Make a motion, second.
I have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules to allow for second night on the night of introduction. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended, I'll now entertain a motion for second read and adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, amending the zone map as pertains to the morgue property.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five, amending the zone map as pertains to the morgue property. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Perfect. You know, stay up there for the.
Yeah, I'm like, oh.
Okay, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, amending unified development ordinance, the town of Pendleton. Hannah, do you want to talk about what this is?
Yeah, sure. Um, so we are starting to um with the help of legal counsel um get in writing some of the processes that we do, just to have a better paper trail than what we've had in the past. Um, so this amendment is basically language uh that we're going to be adding to our many paragraphs of processes for um reporting subdivisions, maintenance fund, performance fund, things like that. Um, because we're looking uh to get a roadway acceptance resolution that basically just, you know, memorializes when the town is taking over a road in a subdivision. Uh, previously it was just when we went out to do an inspection, everything was up to par. Uh, we allowed the developer to switch out their performance bonds, which are you know, the price of the installation and then some uh down to a maintenance bond, which is they're liable, it's a warranty essentially uh for three years to make repairs uh to the road or sidewalks or things like that on their diamond, not ours. So it kind of just memorializes that process of when we are ready to take over a road or infrastructure, we have a resolution for you. Uh, we'll probably have quite a big backlog of blank hunting or farm parrot plan, the falls. Um, so those will be, it just cleans up the process. So that's what that amendment is speaking to, is just here's how now that actually happens. You're not just going to trade out bonds in the office.
Something you need to have legal look over?
Um, they've received this and they've been working with the planning department on this and it's, this received a favorable favorable recommendation from planning commission also last week.
Yeah, and that uh roadway acceptance resolution is kind of too two-sided, um, because we can also use the same kind of template with just a few tweaks um to report new road miles to N-DOT. So we get MDH dollars and it can go on, get a Pacer rating uh and can be eligible for CCMG dollars. Now, none of these will need, you know, resurfacing or roadway reconstruction for hopefully a very long time. Uh, but they are, they do become eligible at that point. So great, kind of two birds, one stone.
Okay, similarly, this went through planning commission or see the favorable recommendation. Um, we can do, would you like to have both reads tonight, since we are getting questions about our maintenance and performance bonds?
Um, I mean, risky, I I think that might be your call, because I don't, I mean, I don't have any.
It's up to you guys.
And it might be good too for us to, at the next month's meeting, have that roadway acceptance resolution for all of the roads that are back.
Oh, our backlogs.
That we can kind of show you what that looks like, if you want.
Okay.
Great, but yeah, up to you.
Then I just need a motion and a second to constitute.
Yeah, I have a question first, you don't mind.
Go for it.
Rob, I have several of these ordinances in the last several years where the planning is signed off and we use that as the first read and the second. Is that not kosher anymore?
Well, that's what uh really what we were looking at uh a few months back is just cleaning up the code and ultimately streamlining. So it's, I think everything that was done in the past is fine. For just trying to implement a system to be a little more consistent with that and streamlined, but there's certainly now we, to the extent that we want to secretly go or just only do first reading, we little provision in the town code that says accepts as provided by law. We'll have two readings. We think you could do one reading, but we just evolved it to do two. That makes sense, and I mean, I may explain it more offline.
But better coverage, better than that.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit safer.
Okay.
Sweeter than serving.
All right, but the ones in the past were okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, really.
Then I will entertain a motion to constitute first read in a second, like this motion is second to constitute first read, okay. And I'll entertain a motion in a second. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to constitute first read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, amending the video. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, the budget for twenty twenty-six. This was prepared, uh, this is the state form budget notice, available on Gateway. Um, every municipality has to do this. Um, our budget as well as that of the park and the fire territory have been prepared um in conjunction with 3D Group, so it's not just us developing these numbers. Um, we have 3D Group out of Seymour, Indiana, that helps us figure out all of these things. Um, not a whole lot to say about it, other than that we're in a, we're continuing to be in a strong um financial situation, right, Willie?
I feel we could, 3D looking over everything real thorough.
Chris is here tonight, is there anything you'd like to add regarding your budget for the newly expanded fire territory?
Yeah, um, if you guys aren't aware, which I'm surprised you guys are not, but uh the fire territory did um receive the green light from the DLGF back on July thirty-first. Excuse me, to go ahead and proceed with the merger with Lappel Stone and Greek Adams, Markville Fire Territories, as well as the Town of Eagles in conjunction with the three that are in current territory, so. But it's four months behind the time, we are in a fast-moving pace to try to figure out how many we are going to hire come January first. So that number looks to be somewhere around twenty-five to thirty, depending on the the final uh number that the other entities uh have to uh distribute to these current fire territories. So with that being said, uh, the budget as you see is presented for you, that is, the budget is actually for at least thirty firefighters. Um, that will staff all four fire stations fully with an engine crew and a paramedic ambulance crew um going forward, starting January first. Um, we are currently in our hiring process right now, uh, the applications are out for four weeks. The application process closes on the, let's see, the whatever, Friday the nineteenth, I believe, at four P M. Uh, right now we're at two hundred and forty-eight applicants that have applied. So we're making some waves uh somewhere, so that's uh, that's a good thing. And uh, the group that I have over there is very confident that we're gonna get some good people to provide services for the areas. And then we're also going to absorb uh the current membership of the other territories um with this, so. Going forward, we're in a good spot uh with the equipment, uh, our capital plan that's been presented and approved by 3D Group. Uh, so uh, we're looking, we're looking for the, I guess, the uh the test for us, if you will, the challenge.
Mm-hmm.
So any questions you guys have on the budget that was presented to you, uh, we'd be happy to answer.
I just want to make a comment, Brian, and I both sat through your budget hearing a week or two ago and looked at numbers and a couple hours and, yeah. I mean, it's.
We're very competitive with other agencies. Um, we know we're not Hamilton counties that can afford those, but um, when I spoke to some of the other fire chiefs around, hey, how many applicants you've got? And I told them we were north of two hundred and forty. Um, they're like, wow, and I think it goes back to just the planning. Um, setting down and executing the good benefit package to provide somebody for not just the current job, but the benefits that go along with it by providing hundred percent medical and going forward. I think that's, that's our selling point and as long as that we're willing to do it and have the capabilities of doing it, that's my uh, that's my goal.
You know, I'm excited for the people of Lappel, Markville, um.
Oh, it's it's a win for everybody. It's a win.
For safety.
Yeah, 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 I mean, that's, you know, that's the thing is, is advanced life support throughout just in this county alone. I mean, you know, I started on the private sector where I ran a paramedic ambulance and chased the volunteer fire department staff out of Madison County and those went away over time. Uh, to have an only probably I would say three to four paramedic schools throughout the state. Tell them, I know there's one in Fort Wayne, I E M S and I U Health. Uh, those are the ones that I know of and they produce maybe thirty to fifty paramedics. And that's, that's just a rough guess of, of how many we have because I mean, you know, when I went to paramedic school way back when, you have to be in E M T for five years before they even looked at you to get into paramedic school and to be able to to have the staff that we have here to be able to bring in, to continue that services is huge, especially for the folks that live in lapel, Marcoville that was provided by basic life support. Now they've got the, uh, the, uh, the most advanced care that they can have outside of the hospital.
We're very fortunate. We've got a great fire department and police department.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Along with great town employees, what can I say?
Yeah.
But just for clarity, at the end of twenty-six, you'll have fifty-five?
Uh, at the end of twenty-six, yes, fifty-five. Well, sixty-five. Because in July, uh, the way that the budget draws are we don't get our budget until July. We gotta stretch that dollar out again, so we're good at that. Um, now we get, now we have to do.
We know a lot more now the second.
Yeah, when you get two months in, you go, oh, we gotta save. Okay. Um, so in July, the ancillary, I say ancillary, the they're essential but non-essential people because we operate right now with the EMS chief, uh, the three battalion chiefs, uh, we do that job now. So we felt that bringing it on later on in the year, um, you know, will help us stretch that dollar out for the first six months, so.
Any other questions? Rob, what do you think that these two hundred and forty applicants, uh, how many are already firefighters?
Uh, well, I can tell you real quick, um, we have the, uh, scroll down here. We use the new, new system. It's actually pretty nice because we had a bunch of different types of questions, um, and it's, uh, we specifically asked the question, what position are you applying for? Because we're offering single certified positions. If you're a paramedic only to, you will staff the ambulance. Out of that position, we've had twenty-two responses and thirty-one lateral transfers. So that means that somebody is already on fire department somewhere that wants to lateral into our apartment.
One other question.
Mm-hmm.
The last young man I swore in, very impressed with if he went through the school program you had, training you had here.
Yep.
Are we continuing that so we can get local guys who won't be on?
We are continuing it, but we're expanding it a little bit.
Yeah.
So, um, the high school rookie program, uh, through Pendleton Emergency Ambulance was started eighty-five, I think it was when the first eighty-five, eighty-six class time. Um, that allowed the high school seniors to run from the high school to the fire station to take calls. Um, as you know, traffic is such a wonderful thing. And now that we have full-time staff at the fire station, time is of the essence and we want to make sure that that high school rookie gets to the fire station safely. So spoke with the school system, uh, a few years ago to try to figure out how we can continue this, um, just trying to come up with some different opportunities. They had a program that was started by D twenty-six to provide fire in EMS through D twenty-six. Perfect. So we started the EMS portion of it. Um, then, and I found out about halfway through the year that they did the fire portion, their junior year. So we are actually instead of waiting till your senior year to just do the EMS portion, all the sophomores that want to do it in their junior year can do the fire portion. So then we go to D twenty-six in the morning. Then we come to the fire station in the afternoon hours after school and ride till ten o'clock. Um, fire truck get fire training that way and then turn around in their senior year uh, into the EMS portion. And then at the end of their senior year through that EMS portion, they will end up being a state certified E M T. They'll have firefighter one and two for the, from their junior year. And then it equates to about twenty, twenty-three credit hours towards your college education for that, so. Kind of a good thing.
That's true.
Very absolutely, absolutely.
Great. Anything else for Chris?
Cool, thank you.
Sherry, just to ask you, is there anything you'd like to highlight or talk about regarding your budget? Don't feel like you're put on the spot. If there's anything you want to share regarding yours, you're welcome to also.
I appreciate it. I, I really don't. I came in late in the evening when it was already submitted, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're.
Any questions or question, you know, things you want to ask regarding the budget? We've all, uh, received information from REE Group regarding each of these line items, um, and they tell us that it's a sustainable budget and that things are going to be just fine for us in twenty twenty-six. So at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Do you want to entertain any public comment? Anybody on teams type any questions? No?
Oh, yeah.
Mark, I feel like we need to give you a chance already.
Yeah, certainly.
Anything you want to add to our budget, you're welcome.
Yeah. It's an interesting thing and I guess just if you're watching or if you're here and this is the first budget, this is my, I think, fifth budget to go through. It's the first one I feel like I really have like a decent handle on. Um, what's interesting about the police department, because we talked about the park and we talked about the fire, but the police department is totally funded out of our general fund and a little bit of public safety lit, which will be undergoing some reform over the next couple of years. Um, and so Mark does not have, or the police department does not have a separate levy, um, like the fire territory has and like the park has. And so that's why I didn't say, Mark, do you want to share about your budget too?
No.
Because Mark's is out of, uh, the town's general fund, um, but we have made great strides over the last several years.
Absolutely.
And funding the, and funding the police department and taking a different approach to procurement and making sure that you guys have the wages that your guys need. And, uh, the hiring model and all of that. And again, I just have to say again, REE Group has really helped us understand how to make our dollars stretch and how to do them in a very effective way, so.
Big ticket items for us, that's not in this budget this year, it's just the talks and future growth of the police department building. Uh, that definitely needs to be a conversation that we are aware, at least, uh, we're stepping on each other around there a little bit, so.
Yeah.
I thought it was huge this year, Chief. Uh, a lot of the guys went to curve.
Oh, it was absolutely.
I thought that was one of the big things we done for.
Yeah.
That's awesome this year.
And that buyout is included in here, um, like that, those payments that we make each year, like it's included in this, so. Um, at this point, I will close the public hearing if there's anyone else who wants to say.
The only thing I want to say, one other thing, a lot of people see the growth in town and think, okay, we're, we're good. Well, they, they don't go on the tax rolls till after a year after build out. So we're actually behind the curve every time.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, but the town's been, been great to work with.
Yeah. Okay, now I will close the public hearing, um, and entertain a motion for approval of first read on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven budget for twenty twenty-six. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for approval on first read of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven budget for twenty twenty-six. Do we have to vote on that, Rob, or no? We're good? Okay, perfect. Okay, moving on, we have a discussion only item, item D, interlocal agreement between the town of Lapel, town of Pendleton, as it pertains to seven to the south.
So this is the somewhat of a unique situation, um, for tonight, we are just simply introducing the interlocal agreement, uh, as well as the proposed resolution that you have in your folder. Um, this is, uh, interlocal agreement, a resolution that we would ultimately be entering in with the town of Lapel. It is for the acquisition and transfer of real estate, uh, real property for right-of-way purposes only. Um, so a little bit of background, we wanted to just kind of bring you up this feed of kind of what has transpired over here in the last, uh, year and, um, and then that way here, we would play to come back in, uh, at the October town council meeting and to revisit these conversations. Um, just to start, the town of Pendleton, we've been working with the developer. It's the Blue Star Ready Mix Corporation. They are currently under construction for that dry mix batch plant building. Uh, that is located in the most far west of our town boundaries, uh, right off of State Road thirteen, just a little bit east, uh, from State Road thirteen there, uh, right off of seven hundred south. So that, uh, uh, that development is on the south side of seven hundred south. South side of seven hundred south, yes, thank you very much. Um, that is there, south of the red, uh, roadway there, uh, is the town of Pendleton jurisdiction. Looking at the north side of that roadway is the town of Lapel jurisdiction. So when we started having conversations with Brian Munch and his group, um, for this development and learning more about the details, just a little bit of information too. They went through a rezone process and then they went through a site development process. But a big piece of their development, there became a clear, quick realization that the condition of seven hundred south, it's a very narrow road as well as the stability. It's an older roadway, a rural roadway, that in order to accommodate more heavy truck traffic there, that it was apparent that we would need to have improvements made to that road. And so the developer had quickly, um, uh, agreed to make those necessary improvements to that roadway. So you'll see that it pretty much goes from State Road thirteen, uh, all there from the west there, and then all the way just a little bit south there of their property. And, uh, in doing so, they not only had agreed to, um, take care of the construction of that roadway improvement, um, providing that roadway improvement, covering the cost of that roadway, which is a little bit over five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but then also covering the cost and the process and taking lead in the land acquisition for what would be necessary to accommodate that road widening there to the north. So you'll see there, um, to the west, and then there's also a parcel here over to a little bit to the east, that there are two properties within the town of Lapel jurisdiction that are impacted with this roadway. Now, keep in mind, um, with the necessary, uh, right-of-way dedication to accommodate this widening of the road, it also needed to have some adjustments for the right-of-way to the souths. But in through our development process for, through Indy boat as well as a concrete plant, we were able to get dedication of right-of-way on the south side. So that left in that north side that needed to be addressed. Um, so, um, at this point, the developer had approached the town of Lapel. They had went and presented the ask and their blessing for to be able to work with those two property owners to acquire that land. Um, they kind of gave a general blessing of that and then they started taking a look and started developing the acquisition paperwork. So that included the first set of appraisals and then also just getting the identification of the acreage that were impacted and so forth, and putting those packets together. We then received that information. We worked with Denzmore and the legal team with those review of those documentation. Uh, they've led us through this process and since then we have gotten a second appraisal, which is required by law. And also too, they've assisted us in creating what documents that we need to have in place to materialize these, uh, agreements with the town of, uh, Lapel. So, um, the, uh, developers also, they have their road construction set, uh, while they are already, uh, underway with the development of their, their building, their concrete plant building. Um, but as far as the road construction set, they are already have those, uh, buttoned up as well. They're ready to improve in twenty twenty-six. But between now and over the winter time, we need to get the acquisition of the land taken care of. Uh, we also need to do some utility relocations, uh, that would be on the dark end and also going through those permitting processes uh, for that roadway improvement. But in order to get there, um, in order to move forward, we need to ma- ma- memorialize these steps, uh, which are then in alignment with our state statute. Those would take place between our two communities. This mechanism and process of both that interlocal agreement and that resolution will allow the town of Pendleton and this developer to take the necessary steps to acquire this right-of-way. We would then expand that roadway to the north, um, complete the installation of that roadway and then associated utilities along the roadway. But then once that construction is complete, then that right-of-way is then given back to the town of Lapel. So it's kind of the process that we would go through. But, uh, this proposed resolution that is in front of you is also, we have a mirrored resolution that the town of Lapel will also be presenting to their town council for consideration. And then we also have that interlocal agreement, um, that we want to, um, um, have, uh, some further discussions and follow-up. We've introduced all these documents to them. And, uh, what we are asking is not to make any decision on that tonight, no approvals, no execution on that, but just kind of blessings for us to go ahead and move forward. Um, this is a, really, uh, we don't anticipate any, uh, concerns or issues on Lapel. Uh, again, the developer is taking all the costs, uh, to, uh, make this happen. Um, but we want to then, um, have the town manager, they've been provided these documents as well as their legal counsel. They communicated with, uh, Rob Shine, and so they're going to take this under, uh, review. They're going to be sharing that with their council and then we're going to kind of come and do some joint conversations and discussions to make sure that we are on the same page, what we are in agreement and what is, who documents are, um, a hundred percent, uh, approved in those final forms. So once we get to that point, we'd like to be able to then bring that back to your body for, um, for presentation and consideration then at the October. Any questions about that or, um, once we get to that point, uh, once these documents are executed, then we would be ready for the next step to be able to have those conversations with those property owners to then present those, uh, those compensation.
Great. Any questions for Denise regarding this?
We're good. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, final item on new business, the opioid settlement approvals. Um, you'll remember several years ago, we, or maybe you don't remember, um, there have been, uh, a couple of opioid settlements that the town has opted into. Uh, as a result of one of them, there's been a bankruptcy filing. And so now, uh, the town needs to basically opt in to be a claim, a claimant, I guess is the right phrase, on that bankruptcy, uh, filing. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, Madam President Council, this, uh, I know some of you probably were involved, uh, a few years ago when this was brought up. Right. Um, you may be familiar with the Purdue, uh, Pharma bankruptcy. It's, um, involves this, uh, several uh, million dollars that's involved. There was a first bankruptcy filing. Now there's been a second bankruptcy filing and what is before you is really we're going to do, ask for three separate motions. Two are related to the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. And the first one is, uh, we're going to ask that if it's the council's will to approve the Pharma bankruptcy plan. And by approving the plan, and I've been working with Jonathan Knoll, uh, that, uh, with Cohen and Malad. He's special counsel that's helped you in, in these lawsuits that have been filed, which you opted into a while back. Now this is a formal approval process. What John indicated to me in talking with him a few times is that all of their clients have approved the bankruptcy plan that is pending and we need to, all we need to do is have a motion to either approve it or not to approve it. And then he will follow it, they're, they have a master list and they will submit all those before the September thirtieth deadline. I've asked them if, um, if that plan of reorganization is approved, what would the town's share be? He can't tell me or us definitively yet, but that'll be forthcoming and, and, and we'll be able to see it. But this is one step. The second step is the Sackler Settlement Participation Form. And that's, um, basically a second piece of it that is out of, it's a part of the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. But what we need to do is consider whether or not we want the town to participate in this settlement. And if so, then we would, I would suggest that we authorize Marissa as the executive of the town, uh, to work with legal counsel with me to finalize those documents. And again, that would allow the town to get whatever type of settlement pro rata that it, uh, would be entitled to. Again, we don't have a definitive yet or not. Um, John Knoll indicated that all his clients have opted to be a part of that as well. Okay. The third thing is the Sandos Settlement Participation Form. That is a smaller pharmaceutical company that's in a bankruptcy setting. This would be a very relatively nominal distribution to the town, as I understand it, just under ten thousand dollars. And again, John Knoll is indicating that all their clients are accepting it. There's a lot of unknown when you're involved in these bankruptcies. It's a multi-state litigation aspect. His recommendation again is, uh, to be a part of it and, uh, allow again, someone from the town, my suggestion is, uh, the executive Marissa to uh, be able to execute what he was needed and then work with legal counsel to finalize that. Again, all three of these I would suggest would be a separate motion consideration. And then we need to finalize all the documents before September thirtieth. It's all related, what I would classify in the big opioid kind of lawsuits and bankruptcies that we've probably all read about over the last several years, so. And I have, if you'd like, I'm happy to share.
Light reading.
Lots of reading and much more that are involved with it. I'm just trying to give you the summary that, um, John and Knoll provided, uh, to me in our discussions.
To represent the town for at the time.
Yeah. Yeah, he's with, uh, Cohen and Malad.
We had opted in to have them represent us in that, like this, in a special council role, like, I believe that. We had opted in to have them represent us in that, like, in a special council role, like, I believe the date's twenty twenty two.
Yeah, and since then, there was a, uh, one bankruptcy filing, a plan of reorganization that as I understand it, they can go through. And that's what, why we need to take these actions, because there's three separate, or two related to the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. And then one is this other smaller, uh, pharmaceutical that John would at least like the town to make a decision on.
Brian, are you familiar with this process? When you speak to.
This is beyond my world. That's why I'm asking, no. So he represented this, and his recommendation is that we approve three items said. Reference.
Correct, yeah, and John indicated Indiana's state local governments could receive up to a total of a hundred million over the next fifteen years. Again, I asked what the town's pro-rata share would be. There's some formula that's gone on through this whole bankruptcy process, I think a lot of it has to depend upon which. City or town has been impacted the most and how they determine that. And so there, again, there's been a number of consultants that have been involved and they determine that, but this is just, so what I would. Suggest simplifying the first thing would be, do we have a motion to approve, um. The Purdue Pharma bankruptcy, plan of reorganization, that's how I'd describe that.
Take that motion.
We have a motion to approve the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy reorganization plan.
Second.
I have a second, and then do you want to vote?
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval to opt in to the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy reorg- reorganization plan. All in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously, moving on to two, is the same verbiage as Sackler?
Sackler would be a motion to approve, um, executing the participation form exhibit K. Which would allow Marissa as, again, the executive, to execute any documents that are related to the Sackler settlement. Which again is a part of, it's, it's part of the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy, but as I understand it, the Sacklers are that. Family that owned Purdue Pharma, and we're talking, this is apparently a, a multi-billion dollar settlement. I don't know what the town's portion is gonna be, and it's all gonna be drawn out, there's such kind of conditions we're in here, but. John's recommendation is that the town would opt to be in this, this settlement, the Sackler Settlement Participation.
Okay, do I have a motion to approving the execution of exhibit K by the municipal executive to sign the paper? Okay, I have a motion in a second, do I have, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Okay, the last thing is a smaller bankruptcy, relatively speaking, is the Sandos. Settlement Participation Form that we would ask that if we could have a motion to again authorize. Marissa's executive of the town to, uh, enter into this participation agreement involving the Sandos. Bankruptcy and to work with whatever other documentation.
Okay, do I have a motion? To allow for the municipal executive to opt in to the bankruptcy stand, or the Sandos bankruptcy, what do they call it?
It's a particip.
Participation form. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second for the municipal executive to enter into the bankruptcy participation form. As it pertains to the company Sandos, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, motion carried unanimously, okay. We did that, okay, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, all right, now I'll open the floor for public comments. Any public comments, anybody on Zoom with any comments? Okay, before we close the meeting, I just have to say one more time, Monday, September fifteenth, from noon until four, we will have special shopping hours. I know a lot of times our Mondays are quite, kind of quiet in Pendleton, we're gonna have restaurants open on Monday, please make plans to come out, shop, eat. Um, and who knows, you may see some things you don't typically see in downtown Pendleton on Monday morning, or Monday afternoon. Um, congratulations to everybody who's had a hand in the Oak Grove presentation thus far, it's been heartwarming and, um, ener- energizing to be a part of it. Uh, but we will see everybody on Monday for the Missouri Main Street Oak Grove visit, uh, anything else from anybody up here? Okay, with that, I will adjourn at seven fifteen.